Good evening, welcome to the August eighth, two thousand seventeen regular town council meeting. Please rise for a moment of silence. And now the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please have a roll call?
Fishbine.
Here.
Laughin.
Here.
Leterno.
Here.
Morone.
Here.
Shurtel.
Here.
Sullivan. Testa. Zandry.
Here.
Servoni.
Chairman Servoni is out of town this evening. Counselor Sullivan is occupied by a work obligation. And Counselor Testa is recovering from a surgical procedure. Agenda item number three, the consent agenda.
Mister Vice Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve and accept items A through X on the consent agenda.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Sentience passes. Item number four, there were no items removed from the consent agenda. Agenda item number five, the public question and answer period. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak tonight's? Please come to the microphone. And just state your name and your address for the record. Thank you.
My name's Carmella Berry and I live at nine Jonathan Road, Wallingford, Connecticut. I've been trying to have the town take a tree down that's supposedly their property, but the tree is so overgrown, if it falls, it's gonna hit my house. And I don't want that to happen. We've been to the town several times for them to take the tree down. We even offered to pay to take the tree down and we've had nothing. The tree warden, he came out once and they said, no, we can't, your neighbors will not like it. Well, I don't think my neighbors would mind if one tree and the whole neighborhood came down. It's not, it's, it's a disaster waiting to happen.
Mister Mc, um, Mister Mayor, Mister McCully, can we touch base with her and connect on the, on the issue?
Uh, I, I could get the lady's phone number and address. I'll go look at it tomorrow.
Right. My husband submitted several letters to the town about this tree. And we're a little bit upset about it because nothing's being done.
Sure. Yeah, move over to this side and we'll, we'll exchange information over here and, and work to get that taken care of for you. Thank you. Is there anybody else that has any questions, comments, or concerns? Mister Stancuna?
Good evening, Daryl Stancuna, eighteen old Village Circle. Um, I was wondering if anything came back about the residents that got the letter of their rent going up sixty percent last month when we were up here.
Not that I'm aware of. I don't know if the mayor has anything. I think that's largely a housing authority or state issue, but.
I, I have no information on that. That is a housing authority issue. That's not a town of Wallingford. The Housing Authority operates under, uh, state, state rules and regulations.
Um, cause the residents said there was a letter from the town too.
I'm not aware of any letter from the town. We would have no, no authority over, over rent.
Were you able to get a copy of the letter?
Yes, we, um, submitted the letter and emailed it to Town Clerk Barbara Thompson, I believe, the next day. We didn't, we didn't even get a response back.
I'm not sure that.
We scanned it.
I didn't, we didn't receive it. Um, let's, we'll follow up and find out what happened, but the Housing Authority is probably the, the key component to speak with.
And, uh, usually do people email back? Cause we'd sent that out like the day after from that meeting a month ago.
Yeah, I think we would.
We didn't even get a response back, not even an email of a reply of acknowledgement or anything.
We can touch base, make sure you have the right, the right email address. Maybe it just got lost somewhere.
Okay. And then the other issues, um, we have a serious opiate problem. I've been up here in June, July, trying to, um, mention this. And if you look at the news every night, there's something going on with someone ODing or across the country, all the way down to our towns. And, you know, the mayor's, uh, son had passed in Nashville. So, I mean, it could happen anywhere and everywhere. So this problem is just, keeps generating and, you know, the residents just are feeling like what, what is really being done about this in town of Wallingford with this drug problem and how to cope with it and try to, you know, deal with what's going on in the world and, and have these programs in town to keep these teenagers busy. And there's just not enough. I, I know the coalition is trying and they're, you know, they do a great job, what they can with their resources. But guys, not, not enough's being done. Not enough is being done. And in this town, it being so wealthy and all, and we supposed to be on top of, you know, the game of what's going on. Um, and we're not, we're not. I mean, these kids are, um, you know, really lost. A lot of them are lost. There's no summer jobs. Now we're going back into school, which is good. But, I mean, we can't have this go on every summer where we got kids in this town trying to apply for jobs and, you know, they're being turned away. Uh, there's no availability. They're cutting lifeguard jobs and you got kids drowning and, you know, passing away during the summertime uh, this summer in Connecticut. And this is a serious problem. And it's, you know, I understand there's budget cuts and whatnot, but we got plenty of money. And we need to fulfill these duties to, to the kids and to the parents and to the residents of town of Wallingford. So I, I just feel you guys really need to look into this for next summer. Whoever, um, is up there at the town council and to keep these kids busy. Cause this, I'll tell you, man, we went through some chances in this town and, and things still happen and they, they keep happening. And, you know, arresting them and whatnot. I mean, we gotta try to communicate with these kids and, and try to educate them and try to have more programs, especially with the money that we have, the high surplus and to have not just for the coalition, but to have more, uh, programs for these kids to keep busy, uh, summer funding of some kind of jobs for them. This is a serious issue. You got a lot of parents out there with kids and these are our future. They're gonna be our, you know, future running the country and the town and whatnot. And we really gotta keep these kids busy and get them employed for the summertime with part-time jobs. Try to work out something with these local businesses, whatever it is. And try to reach out a little more because we're, we're just not doing enough with all that. And the other thing I wanna touch base on is with the roads. If you're gonna shut down a road or whatnot, can you try to give out some kind of notice to people? I, I've talked to so many people that said, wow, this road is closed and then they can't even make it to work across town because it's shut down. And then the detour in itself is, um, you know, long. And these people are getting to work late. So if we're gonna have these construction in town, which is good, we need more of that. But try to give the residents some kind of ample notice of this. You got people, they gotta go to daycare, you know, drop off their kids or whatever business that they have to attend to. And, you know, if you guys know when the scheduling is for the construction sites. So let the residents know if you can in advance whether it's on the website, whether you wanna, um, somehow put it out there on the W P A A channel. Uh, some kind of communication just, just is not going out there to the residents. And with the construction and new technology, people should know, hey, you know, Harrison Road is gonna be backed up today. There's construction there. That way it also keeps a safe environment for the construction workers. You know, you always hear about cars, too many cars coming through anyway and whatnot. So that way it keeps our men and women in safety, you know, working these public utility jobs. So that was another factor I wanna bring in. If you could give some kind of warning to people. And, um, and then the last thing I wanted to mention is, you know, seriously, we need something, uh, going on for next summer with these concerts, you know, the Twilight Band, they canceled a few times, didn't they this summer? And what we need is a real solid band, you know, not some local band, but get a big name vendor out there on the town hall. Um, like Hampton had some shows, New Haven had, um, Sheila E. Um, so I, I'm hoping that you guys are really listening to us because a lot of times people are like, you know what? We write letters, we talk on these microphones and it's just like talking to the wall. So for next summer, if we could please take these issues and matters seriously and put this on the agenda, the kids, the teenagers with jobs for next summer. That way, when they get out of high school or, or even middle school, whatever it is, get some kind of program set up for these kids. That way, right when they finish schools, we've got this and that and maybe work something out with Choate. Choate Rosemary Hall, uh, we should be working tightly with them, you know, they're a great school in town and we need to integrate them more with the, the residents, uh, in town with the kids. We need to not have this division either. I think that'd be great. They have a swimming pool and everybody knows they have tennis courts and whatnot. But honestly, we gotta break this wall down with, um, with, uh, the division there with Choate. We gotta really try to work together with them and unite each other. And, um, so I'd like to see that hopefully for next summer, that this becomes part of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. There was somebody over here that wanna comment. Mike, name, address, your troop number, your rank, all that kinda stuff. Yeah, it's right there.
I know. My name's, well, okay. My name's James McGovern. Um, I'm from Troop One, um, first class. Um, live at fifty-three Ward Street. Um, I heard that Yalesville, um, they, they're renaming their, they're renaming their school over to, they would at Mary Fritz. And I thought it was a nice honor and I was, and I was also wondering if there are other schools that are, that are for, um, that are renaming their schools for, um, notable, um, residents of Wallingford.
Thank you for coming to meeting and coming to the microphone. Uh, yes, Mary Fritz, the school will be officially dedicated in the next couple of weeks as school starts. And, um, at this time, I don't think we're planning on renaming any other schools. Kinda wait and see if, uh, if the honor is, um, is, is kind of earned by somebody. But it's something that I think everybody's always kind of thinking about, particularly with the schools that are just named after streets and sections of town.
Forward, I'm looking forward to, I'm looking forward to like getting through that too.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Mister Conroy, can, can this gentleman just go first and then, thank you.
My name is Garrett Stancuna, eighteen old Village Circle, and I'd like to just discuss a minor oversight. In two thousand fifteen, or sorry, two thousand thirteen, I believe, Ward Street Extension was repaved. And former to that, there used to be a crosswalk by the Simpson Avenue and Ward Street Extension intersection. I was one, oh, basically the crosswalk was never repainted after the road was repaved. And I was wondering if you could please consider repainting the crosswalk in that intersection.
Sure. The Director of Public Works is here and he's gonna make a note. And the mayor's also made a note. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mister Conroy.
I'd just like to make a mention on Daryl's, the opioid epidemic. I want you to, everyone to understand that forty-four people.
Sir, can you give your name?
Oh, Bruce Conroy, thirteen Burke Heights. Sorry about that. Forty-four people every day don't go home. They die. Not enough is being done. Daryl said it very well. We don't do enough here in town. We need to network with the, it's areas, area towns and see what they're doing and do more. I know we do some, but we don't do enough. And it's not just children. People of all ages suffer from this. We need to help everybody along. We need a real program in town to help people. There's no snickers about it, no laughing. This is a very serious matter. So I just wanted to support Daryl in that. And, uh, I know you already did your consent agenda and you did it. It's done. Um, but the, uh, matter pertaining to the leasing in the hayfields, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't gonna lose too much money on that. If we're gonna pick, we're gonna pick and choose, or allow the Conservation Commission or whoever's in charge to pick and choose, how much money are we gonna lose by picking someone who doesn't, who can't pay as much? Now, I understand a local farmer paying within, you know, taking their local farmer's bid within ten percent. That's an acceptable bidding practice for a local or minority contractor. I'm a, I do, I'm a construction worker. I'm a construction manager, so I understand all that. Within ten percent's an acceptable loss to allow a, an in-town person to get the property. Or perhaps limiting only fifty percent of the fields to one person. But just to allow somebody to choose who gets it and who doesn't, based on what, that they think they're more qualified to have it, that's not, that's not good business. That's not a good practice. That's pretty much it. Thanks a lot.
No, thank you. Have you spoken with the Conservation Commission yet?
Yeah, I already know their, their stance is they, they wanna give it to people they think are qualified. I don't think that's the correct way to do it.
Mister Chairman, uh, I can tell a little bit, uh, there are fields that are vulnerable. They, they have some wetlands on them. They have, uh, maybe some variety of, uh, species of, of, uh, growing plants, et cetera. And there are fields where they like to have the, the, uh, the less see, the farmer on hand to be watching on a more frequent basis, exactly what's happening on the field and being able to take care of it. So every field has its own uniqueness and I think they're trying to tailor what they're doing to not only be certainly conscious of a fair rental, but to emphasize the need to really take care of the, um, ecology, the, the, um, health of the field and thus have it be productive over a longer period of time. That it's not just being exhausted through, uh, poor practices maybe. And, uh, a longer term lease and inability to make any judgment other than based upon money really doesn't help them in that regard. So I believe that's what their goal is.
Right. And I do understand, um, I understand every point you mean. But is there a plan or is it just arbitrary? I mean, do they have a, did they set you out a plan on which fields are, are under that program?
I, I think if you're concerned about given fields or all the fields, they are, they at their meetings discuss what are the issues at the field and what must be addressed and what they're expecting from the less see, the, the individual renting the field. So that is where that happens. At their meetings, uh, the environmental planner is very much involved with that. Um, and if there are problems, the problems would show up at their meetings where the decision is made.
And that, I was actually gonna go to their meeting. I think it's this week. But, um, my issue is that you just, you allowed them to do what they want without any guidelines. That was what I meant. And I, I'm, I'm.
The guidelines are there. It's, it's in order to protect and maintain the fields in a proper manner. That's, it's in their minutes. That's, that's what their goal is. And, and, uh, unless we see that they're not following those precepts, uh, I think we can trust and, and have confidence that they will be making judgments that are in the interest of, of each of the fields and its productivity.
I understand that, but one of their big ones was that farmers in town couldn't outbid those people from North Branford, I think a horse farm. Um, that was one of the big things they were on. That's why I brought it up where I would've said nothing. The conservation thing, I'm all for, Mister Mayor. Absolutely. If that's what they need to do there, that's fine. But when you bring up the, the other issue that certain people can't afford to lease them, then that's, then the conservation issue isn't the sole issue.
True, isn't that they can't afford. Obviously, a larger agricultural concern can bid a higher price. And they're worried that a few large firms could end up with all of the fields. Some of those fields being more vulnerable need a different treatment. In part, certainly they want to encourage local agriculture, you know, the smaller farms that are in Wallingford encourage them as well. So it's, it's a blend of things, but just making the money, the amount of rental per field, the determinant about who should have custody of the field, they feel is, is jeopardizing the long-term best public interest. And, you know, certainly I support that and I think the council does as well.
Well, that's cool. I, um, I fully understand yours. I'll talk to the commission like I have before. But I know what their big issue was because, but that's it. I'm, I'm all good. Thank you very much for answering as best you could. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number six.
Mister Vice Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve a one percent increase for retirees for the next three years.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, questions, or comments from the counselor? Counselor Fishbine?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, I guess without Mister Bose here, I, I guess to the mayor. M- m- mayor, the memorandum, um, indicates that this increase would cost an additional eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and nineteen cents. Um, is that money already in the budget? Um, or where is it gonna come from? Or, okay.
Uh, that money would come out of the pension fund.
Okay, so the pension fund is already underfunded. I, I think the last time we talked about this is about, it's seventy-three percent. Um, am I to understand that, um, this increase was anticipated in what was appropriated in this last year? Or is this going to, um, uh, more negatively impact our pension fund?
Let me backtrack just a little bit. The, the contracts, the pension contracts in town, some of the contracts done by practice. Once every three years, um, the personnel department comes before the council to seek, um, your recommendation for whatever you think that increase should be. And it's based solely on the vote of the council. The, it's not a uniform. It's not for all retirees. There are certain select retirees that would not be part of this, uh, the increase. If you look at the memo, it says to be eligible for this increase, the individuals must be retired for at least one year by September fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. Not be subject to any automatic cost of living adjustment, which is the case with police and fire, as well as certain members of the electric hazard plan. And not be receiving any heart and hypertension or workers' compensation benefits. So if any of those conditions are met, those, those individuals will not be getting the increase. This would be, if, uh, from what I know, this is not budgeted in any line item in any department, but it would come out of the pension fund, which I believe all pension payments are made from.
And just, just to further explain, every three years this is looked at. So this is a one percent, but it's not a one percent for the next three years. It's one percent now. So when you look at that, there is not an annual increase. Uh, certainly we're conscious of, um, pension, uh, obligations of the town. But we're also conscious of the fact that many of these people do not receive social security. Uh, so this is, this is the increase, the only increase that they would receive. And again, it's not one percent each year. It's one percent and that is the increased amount for three years before this matter is taken up again. So we try to be fair. I think this last year we had a thirteen or four percent, thirteen or fourteen percent return on, on the investments in the pension plan. And a previous time, I believe we were, we also looked at those same factors and I think it was one and a half, but we have dropped it to one, or that's our recommendation.
Well, my, my question was, we had had discussions previously about that our pension is underfunded.
Yes.
And I think the, the percentage that was given to us is we're funded at about seventy-three percent. Is this, if this body approves this and the money comes from the same pot, is that seventy-three percent, stay at seventy-three or is it gonna go down to something like sixty-nine or sixty-eight?
I don't know how that would work. I do know that, and the mayor's correct, the fund earned a return of thirteen and a half percent for last fiscal year. So you take what was in the pension fund, you add the thirteen and a half percent and then deduct the eighty-seven, nine, six, seven, nineteen, and that's the impact.
Okay, so I, I think it's the long way, it, it, it is an additional negative to, to the pension funding.
It'd be an additional deduction, yes.
Okay. And then as far as are, are we picking and choosing the selected classes that are getting this percentage? Or is there some statute that overrides this?
Some of the contracts specify who gets it. Uh, the longstanding practice from what those contracts have been based on has been what's outlined here in that last sentence of the second paragraph. So people who get the automatic cost of living increase, they're not eligible for this. People who didn't retire within a year, they're not eligible. This has been a longstanding practice as to how the council has, uh, made the motion and how the motion has been approved.
But are we restricted from saying, or from taking out the provision that they have to be retired for at least a year?
You can do what you want.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, sometimes, sometimes up here we, we want to do something and somebody tells us, well, federal law precludes that, state law precludes it. Is there any law that precludes us from doing that?
That's at your discretion.
Okay.
But this has been the practice.
So heart and hypertension, um, payments are only available to fire employees?
That's correct.
So, um, and heart and hypertension payments are on top of pension payments?
The way the contracts read, the pension contracts, when it comes to disability is an individual receives their workers' compensation payments, they receive their pension payments. But in no event can the two combined exceed a hundred percent of their salary at the time of disability or the time of retirement. So that's the reason why they're exempt from this, uh, this increase we're up, upbringing to you this evening.
Okay, can you just, because I'm, I'm trying to get to the, the thought process by taking the one percent away from, so to speak, those who are getting heart and hypertension payments or workers' comp payments? What, what's the thought process behind that?
They're already being made whole. They're receiving a hundred percent of their pay that they were earning at the time of their disability until their case gets settled, either a workers' compensation, um, where they pass away. So, you know, uh, the logic is they would be getting a double increase. They get their increase from workers' comp and the town should not be providing them an increase in their pension.
What about the heart and hypertension? Because I.
Same thing.
Okay, so just educate me, just, I, do those cases get closed or is that something that, um, I thought it was something that goes on forever, basically.
Well, we currently have a couple of cases that have continued for quite some time. Uh, risk manager Kurt Tribber, when we have these cases come up, he does try to settle them as quickly as possible.
On the heart and hypertension?
Correct.
Okay. So, so like a workman's comp, those get closed out with a final award and that kinda stuff?
If, if there's a settlement to be made, yes. We try, we try for that. We, not always successful. Like I said, there's still a couple of longstanding heart and hypertension cases going on. Like I said, there's still a couple of longstanding heart and hypertension cases going on right now. Those individuals would not be covered under this 1% increase that we're talking about this evening.
Yeah, that's, I'm just looking at that distinction because I know the workers' comp, you know, they want to bring a matter to a conclusion. I'm not aware of that so much of the heart and hypertension. I know that the town tries to settle the cases to get rid of the longstanding liability, the long-term liability.
Correct.
But I'm just procedurally, I don't know if that's required, and I I'm just having trouble with looking at the two different classes differently. So thank you for your answers, and I continue to think. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Shortell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to, just one point I want to clarify, something Councilor Fishbein indicated that, because this, we talked about this at our June 13 meeting, the pension being underfunded. I mean, that's kind of a misnomer. The pension isn't underfunded. I mean, the calculation is an estimate based on every single employee, even people who are decades away from retirement. Is it correct?
That's the rationale, yes.
Yeah, so to say it's, you know, it's 73. whatever the number is underfunded, that I don't want people watching this meeting to think that somehow the Town of Wallingford pension is not, it is, there's 192.6 million dollars in the Town of Wallingford Pension Fund. That's earning the investments that you spoke of, so that
Correct.
There's more than adequate funding. I mean, in fact, many of us voted against putting more money in the pension fund at that a month ago for that very reason. So I just want to, I want to clarify that one point, but as long as I'm doing it correctly. I mean, you can contradict me or tell me if I'm
There is money available to cover the 87,967.19.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Chairman, just, and to your point, Mr. Shortell, the concept of fully funded is an illusory concept because fully funded is based upon the value of the assets you have. So then, an event like 2008 occurs, and what you thought was, at that time, I think, 130 million dollars, turns out it was only 100 million. So you go from fully funded, or even so-called overfunded, to a point that you're now underfunded because it's all based upon a valuation of assets that are being used for investment. So you have to pay attention to it. If you get too far down on the underfunding, obviously, you have a risk. You want to be at least where we are or more, but it is illusory from the standpoint, fully funded is only a matter of the health of the of Wall Street at the time you value where you stand.
Right, understood. Totally agree. Just, I just wanted to clarify that term, though, because I think we're in good shape based on today, but yeah.
Thank you, Councilors Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could you refresh my memory, please, what we normally assume growth at in the investment? Is it like 7% or 8%?
It used to be an 8% assumption on the rate of return, and slowly, we've been cutting that back from 8%. I believe it's either 7.6 or 7.5% today.
So we're operating as we add add actual cash, which comes in as part of the budget, plus we estimate that percentage, and we've actually done about 5% better?
Yes.
All right, so 5%, 192 million, 19.2 million's 10%, so about half of that would be 9 million. We made 9 million more than we were figuring, and we're looking to fund $87,967. I think we're pretty comfortable with that. So I'm reading it that way. I mean, forgetting that even that from what you already have this allocated, but even if it was a concern, we actually made about 9 million more than we were figuring on.
The return was 13.5% from what, from when we started.
Right, 13.5%, but your estimates, you're running between 7.6 and
Correct.
So you've done
We exceeded.
Well better. You've exceeded your own expectations, your own rule of thumb. So I think it's very easy to say this is easily funded. I just wanted to get comfortable with the number, but we're well above where we figured we would be, just because, just like when we get hammered, when the market goes down, we've been riding the high curve, and we're being smart about it. We're not estimating a change upwards, even though the market's riding high. We're actually being more conservative with what we think we'll make.
We're contracting backwards, yes.
No, that makes perfect sense to me. I just wanted to make sure I had the right math.
Because over the, over the last eight or nine years, I believe, the the average rate of return has been 6.8%. So we're starting to get within what the actuaries say we should be.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the councilor? Councilor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So over what period of time is the 14% return? Is it a week or a day?
No, it's the, it's the rate of return from last fiscal year, July 1 to June 30. So as of June 30, 2017, the rate of return was 13.5%.
Okay. And then, the, I think you said for the 10 years prior there, too, it was about 6.5%?
6.8%.
Okay.
It's eight or nine years.
Okay. All right, that answers the question. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Any questions or comments from the public? Mr. Stancuna?
Daryl Stancuna, 18 old Village Circle. How many of these employees that are retired are we talking about? 363,000? People?
Correct.
363 retirees. And which departments did they retire from?
General Government, utilities, the Board of Ed.
So these are teachers?
No, they're not teachers. These are the support staff of the Board of Education, the cooks and the food service workers, the secretaries, the custodians, the professionals.
And the police department, too?
Some police are covered by this. Some, some have an automatic 2% COLA, which is a separate issue.
Okay, any of them from the programs with the GED at the railroad station, anything, is that part of a town pension, too?
No, they're not part of the town pension.
Okay, and then, do they, do they usually get an increase yearly besides this 1% for three years?
No.
So they never get an increase from, when was the last time they got an increase?
September 2014.
And what was that increase?
1.5%.
So they got more in 2014? And what was the interest on the return back then? Did you say 6%?
No, I'd have to go back and look at the records. I can't say specifically what it was that year.
Someone asked, a few minutes ago, Mr. Fishbein asked, and you said something about 6% on a return.
That's the average rate of return over the last, the, if you take an average over the past eight to nine years, it's 6.8%. Specifically in 2014, I can't answer that question for you right now.
Okay, but the payout was 1.5% 2014, and during the eight years, there was a return of 6.5% from 2015?
No, that was the average over that period of time. There could have been 14% return and a minus 16% return. On average, it came out to 6.8%.
Okay. And then, when did they get a return of a percentage before 2014?
I'm not sure I know what you're asking.
Well, you just said 2014, they got 1.5, and now there's discussion of them getting a 1%. What was the percent before 2014?
2011 was 1.5%.
Okay, so the past decade, have they been consistently getting 1.5%?
No. Before that, 2008, it was 3%. 2005, it was 3%, and I think in 2002, it was 3%.
Okay. So if the return recently was 13%?
13.5%.
15.5%.
13.5%.
13.5%. So who made the proposal for these retirees to only get 1% possibly over three years? And it's not 1% a year, like the mayor clarified, it's only 1% for three years. Yet, the return was 13.5%, which is more than double from what the return was for the last decade, right? So why would the number go down from 1.5 since the return doubled? And we have a surplus of 192 million dollars in this overfunded pension fund? Definitely sounds like. Why would it go to 1% and not, let's say, it's been going over the years to 1.5% consistently, and the return has been 6%? Why wouldn't it increase to at least 2% for these folks?
Maybe I can help with this. We are facing the worst fiscal disaster right now than certainly any of us have seen in the past 30 years, and that's the state government. We are facing a potential $14 million loss in income from the state government, which will mean probably layoffs in Wallingford if that becomes a reality. Our budget is is almost an illusory budget right now because it's it's depending upon much revenue that unless the General Assembly adopts a budget, we won't receive anything close to what we budgeted to be received from the state of Connecticut. So there are factors now facing the community that certainly weren't even dreamed of or estimated a few years ago. I think everyone probably anticipated, well, things will gradually get better from 2008, and, you know, we'll all benefit from that. Well, that isn't occurring, and it's actually getting worse. So with that kind of fiscal disaster staring us in the face, we have to take that into account when we're looking at spending additional money, whether it's out of pension or out of any source of revenue.
But, Mr. Mayor, if there's a disaster, then how is there a return of 13.5%, which is more than double from what's been going on for the last decade of 6%? And these folks were being paid 1.5%, and now we're decreasing these retirees that work very hard in this town to only 1% for three years? It doesn't make any sense. So what you're mentioning doesn't add up right to tonight's discussion.
No, no, it exactly adds up because if we're assuming that somehow there's going to be plenty of money in the future, we're wrong. Wall Street is making money. The question should be asked, how is Wall Street doing so well when the rest of the economy is not? There's something wrong with the whole equation. There's something wrong with the structure of what is going on. But we are facing a huge financial problem, and that, we can't ignore that when we're talking about every year, we increase our pension payment. So yes, we're receiving a return on investment, but every year, we're taking more money out of taxes in order to support that. Well, the higher those pension payments go, the more that supports more money being devoted for investment purposes. Investments aren't a measure of the health of the economy. They're they're one factor, one symptom, and right now, you can't rely upon that as an indication that everything's getting better. So I think it is extremely pertinent to this decision. Regardless of the interest being made in investments, what is the reality of our ability to fund our, our workforce in order to provide services? And every dollar that we have to increase for pension purposes is another dollar that comes out of taxes. So the higher the pension payments go, the more money will be needed to support them coming out of taxes. So there's a balancing here, but the crisis at the state level, it casts a long shadow, and it's casting a shadow over this discussion, along with every other discussion regarding government services and the way they're funded.
Thank you, Mayor. But if the last two decades, the history does matter, you're not talking a fluke situation where the investment went up 13.5% in one year, and it was dragged in the past 10 years. So history is a major factor, Mr. Mayor. I disagree strongly. You're talking probably even further where the percent has been going up. I could keep asking how much that fund kept going up from the 90s on, and I'm sure it's still been going higher. So history is a major factor, and the Dow has been reaching new highs, and we do have a better economy with the investments making this money. And it's just not fair unless that money used for something else, that 192 million dollars?
The money isn't used for anything else. I think we just disagree. You think the economy is getting better? I think it's getting worse, and I think we need to act on the basis that there's certainly little, if any, proof that anything is getting better in the state of Connecticut, as proven by their inability to adopt the budget.
And what about these retirees? I mean, one day, you're going to be retired, and you're not going to want a panel of people to say, hey, you know what, you're only going to get 1% for three years. These folks have to live on that. And do these folks get social security?
Some may get social security, some may not. However, we may end up with people being laid off. Is it fair to them? You're trying to balance all of these factors, and pensions affect our annual budget, just as all expenses do. So there's a, there's a problem. There's going to be, unfortunately, negative effects for many people as a result of what's going on throughout the state.
Well, 1% isn't that much for three years for these folks to live on. It's not even like a 1% increase a year, which is even very, very low. And with inflation, inflation's pretty high, and you're going to try to expect these folks to live on 1% from an increase working hard for the town. So my standpoint, I'd like to see the council make a vote and a decision to increase it to at least 2% for these folks for three years. It's not 2% a year. It's only 2% for three years, and I think that would be fair to these retirees and for the future worker that works hard. And as far as trying to throw out there who's going to be unemployed, how is anybody going to be unemployed if the fund has been going higher? 192 million plus? That's an amazing amount of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public? Coming back to the council, Councilor Fishbein?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim, you were asked a question about the social security.
Yes.
How many of these individuals that would be receiving this are also receiving social security as well?
I don't know.
Okay.
But I can tell you, most of them, because they're receiving a government pension, if not all of them, are having their social security benefits reduced because of the government pension. And also, too, if you look at some of the pensions, they exceed, well, whatever the cap is for social security. But even more to the point, the cost of living has been very low. In 2015, the increase for social security was 0%. And in 2016, which is the year that social security recipients are now, they're receiving a third of a tenth of a percent. So I think over three years, you know, 1% would pretty much be in line with social security increases as well.
Well, and that's why I was looking at the classes, because we have some of these individuals like fire that don't get social security.
Correct.
Whereas, we might have someone who's the secretary for the Board of Ed, who would get a social security, would be getting paid through social security, as long as they didn't be a non-qualifier under one of the other things.
Correct.
And they would have gotten the COLA increase through social security. So, you know, it would be fair to bring those that don't get social security up to a similar level.
Correct.
But using that same thought process, then it would be fair to not include those individuals who got the COLA increase through the social security. So those are the balances that I'm looking at, and I'm listening to the discussion between the And I'm listening to the discussion between the mayor and the resident and almost pushing me to vote against this based upon the state. So, which leads me to my final question. Do we have to do this tonight or can we wait until, you know, the state thing is, is worked out eventually? And then, you know, maybe Mr. Stan Kuhn's suggestion, you know, maybe we get more money from the state and, you know, do we have to do it tonight?
Some of the contracts talk about it being every three years and three years from the last one would be around September 15th of, you know, 2017. I don't know if that would give rise to some type of a labor inquiry. Um, I don't think there's any specific reason not to do it, but at the same token too, I, I would probably have to look into that matter a little bit more.
Only because I've, I've generally been talked out of this based upon the exchange, but if the money, you know, situation changes, you know, I'd probably vote in favor and that's the question mark.
There's, I think we need to clarify something though. Um, someone, someone in FIRE could have social security.
I thought they were all non-social security.
Well, all of town government is non-social security. However, people can amass the quarters necessary through other employment that they would be receiving social security. The other factor is social security, I believe the maximum you can receive regardless of your salary is no more than approximately $30,000 a year. Whereas town pensions are 70 or 75%, unless there's a disability, 70, 75% of the last three or the three highest years of salary. Is that correct, Jim?
It's, um, your highest three years of salary. It's, uh, there's a very, some multiplier, some are two and a quarter, some are 2.15%. Uh, some are 2.35. So.
But the town's pension is truly a pension. Social security, as you sometimes read, is not meant to be a pension that allows a person to, to function as if they were receiving the same income they did while they were working. I do believe that the maximum you can receive is $30,000. So there are vast differences between the two programs, but you are able to amass the quarters for social security depending upon when you took employment with the town and also whether, the time you retire. There may be time to hold other employment. There may be time after you retire to have other employment.
Then just to clarify, this is subject to the approval of the council. It's conditioned upon it.
Councilor Letturna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just to, to continue on a little bit with the social security, something that the mayor touched upon too is I, I don't think it's, we should go into the assumption that, you know, if you amass enough quarters that a person can collect 100% social security when they retire, what happens is they're going to lose, I, I, there's a percentage that they lose and there's, it's a, it's a big percentage.
They can lose up to two thirds.
Up to two thirds.
Right.
So the minute they start, it, it's quite a program because they can collect social security while they're working for the town, the town of Wallingford. And, but once they start with a pension from the town, then the social security gets reduced by two thirds.
But it's offset by the government pension.
Pardon?
But it's offset, the reduction in social security is offset by the government pension.
Okay.
So for instance, if your social security gets reduced, it's because you're getting a government pension.
Right, exactly. Yes. So I just, I wanted to clarify that. It's not like you get, when you retire, you get, even if you have the quarters, you do not get 100% social security and then 100% of your pension.
I, I think 30 years of social security contributing at the minimal, um, the amount of pay will provide you with full social security. I'm not exactly sure. So it's, it's, it's up to two thirds based upon the years you've contributed to social security.
But there's, yeah, I just wanted to bring that forward, that there's more factors than, it's not very clean.
Uh, it's very complicated, but there's no way for us to know, given that we are not making social security payments as a general rule for anyone in general government, there's no way for us to know who is eligible for social security and who isn't. We have no access to that. Is that correct, Jim?
I'm not sure we can find that out, Mayor.
Right, I don't, I don't.
Yeah. If I may.
Please.
There are some employees that will retire without any social security because they've never paid into it, which means there's no, um, no health insurance either because they have never paid into anything. So they're going to rely solely on their, their pension.
Yes.
Councilor Zandry.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's, I just want to add on to this piece of the conversation. The, the mayor was correct on the figure, almost down to 500 bucks. It's $29,424 at the maximum right now. Councilor Letturna makes a very good point in that anybody that has never worked out in the private sector won't have the Medicaid, they won't get that insurance, they've got to count on the pension. Um, so that's important. I mean, this cuts both ways. Somebody could have had enough quarters before they started working and are able to collect a little something. Some people work and then they worked part-time and they add to their ability to get and earn social security at a higher rate, but it would never be more than that 29,000. And again, it's offset, once you start taking the pension, they reduce that 29,000, let's round it to 30, would basically be 10 and then the pension. Um, and just to discuss the changes in the COLA, in 2015, it was 1.7 and, and much to your point, it was 0 in 16 and 0.3. So it is 2% over the three years, we're buffering in 1% now. I mean, I guess we could look at 2% if anybody wanted to, but we've been kind of drawing down from one and a half over the three-year periods. And some of those years in question, there were a couple of zeros, but there were, there were years of 5.8, 2.3, 3.3, 4.1. And I believe that those were the years that we did a 3% over the three years. So this has been pretty much our status quo and, and even in the reduction point. I, I, I think that, you know, if, if we're talking about our direction, we're pretty much on the same path. But I mean, at least this gives us the rest of the numbers to some of the discussion that we've been having up here. Um, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, just a clarification. Town employees do pay in toward Medicare. Is that correct, Jim? So at 65, you are part of the Medicare program.
It's, I believe it's anybody hired after April 1, 1986, pays into Medicare.
Okay. Any other counselors? Councilor Maron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you know, I strongly have the sense that every worker needs to plan for their own future. And certainly if you work for the town, then your pension is, is part of that plan. So I understand we're debating the difference between 1 and 2% in points and who has social security and who doesn't, but I mean, really who has social security is irrelevant because every worker has their own responsibility to plan for their own retirement ultimately. If the administration feels that 1% is a fair sum, um, considering that we're in a climate where the cost of living is virtually nil, I think 1% seems like a fair number. I think they're, I agree with the rationale. I think we're just belaboring this by talking about, you know, a bunch of scenarios that are really not relevant to the discussion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Anybody else? See none. Madam Secretary, could we have a roll call?
Laffin.
Yes.
Letturna.
Yes.
Maron.
Yes.
Shortell.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hud. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks. Item number seven, Mr. Zandry, this is yours regarding the tree at 22 Pomeroy Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. McCully.
Good evening.
I, I just wanted to take the opportunity to kind of get caught up with you regarding this resident. They've, they've, I know they've contacted you in the past, Public Works Department, about that tree on Pomeroy Avenue. I've gone and taken a look at it. I know Public Works has gone out to take care of, of the sidewalk out there. So I, I guess I kind of wanted to almost get like a little report out from you of what you guys have been trying to do over there to kind of tend to the issue or what issues are actually there and maybe have a little bit of discussion about it.
Well, there was, uh, basically two complaints. The tripping hazard, the heaving of the sidewalk, the engineering has already addressed. They've, uh, they put some asphalt down to smooth out the area. And if you want to see how many of these areas the engineering has, has to do, just as, uh, to get ready for tonight, I drove from Prince Street down to the, on, uh, the side, where the sidewalk ends on South Main Street. And there was over 20 areas that had been patched temporarily until the concrete can be replaced. So if you take that number versus all the streets in Wallingford that have sidewalks, it's hundreds of those. So, uh, Mr. Sledgester's situation is not uncommon in town and it has been addressed. The sanitary sewer on Pomeroy Avenue was installed in 1923 along with the water. It was a clay pipe. Clay pipe, uh, does disintegrate with age and the clay pipe that's, uh, that runs from his house to the main in the middle of the street that the homeowner is totally responsible for, not the town, is 94 years old. So when Mr. Sledgester, I hope I'm pronouncing his name correctly, uh, purchased that house last year, the previous owner, in one of his letters that I have, uh, told him that he had to have the sanitary sewer snaked every two years to clean out roots and debris. So it's, the problem existed, uh, going back as far as we know to 2003. And my advice to him, and it's the advice I give to any residents where they have a clay pipe and it's very old, is replace it. I know it's, it's not inexpensive, but once you do it, it's, you're done with getting the pipe snaked. It's guaranteed to work for the next thousand years. They don't, they don't disintegrate like clay pipes. And this is the position I'm in with Mr. Sledgester. If, if he has any intention of replacing that line, I will work with him. And if the tree is compromised as part of that work, up to and removing the tree is an option. And that tree would be removed at the, the town's expense. But we're not there yet.
Okay. So I, I know, I make the assumption you've been out there to investigate the tree. You, you're alluded to as much in your conversation.
It's a very healthy tree.
And that, that was where I was going to go next because, you know, I, I've taken a look, I've gone out there, I know Councilor Letturna's gone out there as well. We've, we've seen some limbs down. Uh, I, I don't, I'm not an arborist, I'm not a tree professional. I don't think, I don't think myself personally that there's any more limbs down than say your garden variety tree that takes some snow in the winter. So I, I don't, I don't see anything with my, my, you know, inexperience of it. And you have much more experience in dealing with this. You're saying the tree's healthy. The, the heaving and the deterioration of the sidewalk, I'm, I'm a little concerned about that because one of the big things we always hear in this room is the liability to the town. It's a lot of the reasons why we've removed a lot of the trees in the center of town. Combination of things. It was, the tree was outgrowing, the, the area that it was in, signage problems blocking the buildings, growing into the buildings, but a chunk of it, a piece of it was always that it would, the, the root system would push up and start to knock the bricks around, which was always making a tripping hazard. Now, I know that the tar has been put down to minimize the actual holes and the deterioration in the sidewalk, but even the uneven slope, because it's pushing the entire brick of the sidewalk up and we've got the tar patch, is that enough to, lack of a better way to say it, minimize our exposure as the town? Because we often hear of, well, the town is responsible after they're quote unquote put on notice about something. So have we addressed that satisfactorily with the work that's been done?
Well, I can't speak for engineering, but as I stated earlier, from Prince Street to the, to where the sidewalk ends, you have at least 20 areas times, anywhere you have mature trees, you're going to have displacing of sidewalks guaranteed. And I can't imagine what, uh, our engineering department, the volume that they have to deal with. They put temporary patch down, uh, legally, I can't speak to that. If that's enough, uh, we addressed it. But if you want to go around, that we cut down this tree for that reason, then you might as well get the troops ready to start taking a lot of trees down.
Okay. I mean, I, 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 I'm satisfied at this point. I mean, these are the things that I wanted to get addressed because I think there's, there's definitely, uh, a problem over there, but, but as you've identified, it's actually the, the service line from the main to the house.
That's correct.
And that's, and that is a homeowner thing. Um, you know, they've brought up, you know, a number of times about the situation, but I, I guess I also have an add-on question. Cause it, because it was brought up earlier, what, what does happen in a situation like this where, let's say the homeowner just decides on their own that they want to take down a tree. Now that's on town property. They're not allowed to do that because it is a town tree.
Yes, that's a, that's a crime.
Right.
Something the legal department, the police would have to handle.
So I guess, I guess my question would be, and, and you've actually partially addressed it. You actually indicated that if the, the, the pipe work was going to get done and the tree may be impacted or in the way or compromised, that you'd make a judgment and perhaps up to it including moving, removing the tree because it's a town tree. What, what happens in a, in a parallel situation where a homeowner wants to get the tree out because they're concerned about that or do, would they, because again, you just indicated they can't do it, it's against the law. Would they file a request with Public Works? You know, there's this tree at the edge of my property, it's really on the town right away there. I want permission to take it down. Is there a process for that or no?
No.
So there's no discretion there then at that?
I get requests. I've been tree warden for almost 25 years. They don't like the tree. The tree's too big. It's leaning over my house. It's, people want trees down for a lot of the wrong reasons. And in my position, especially with mature trees, not your boulevard trees like the trees in the downtown area that we're replacing. This is an 18 to 20 inch diameter tree. This is a substantial tree. These are the types of trees and it's a healthy tree, uh, that we want to keep.
Okay. So I, I think that answers my question. I'm going to kind of repeat it to make sure that I've got it. Basically there's, there's no process if a homeowner wants a tree like that removed. There's, it, it just stays and that's the end of that.
They can make a request to me and I would.
Judge on it.
I, I would make a judgment on it.
Okay. Well, that's fair enough. I mean, at least there's something there that they can do. So I, I, I guess I don't really have any more questions. I would defer to anybody else on the council of those because I mean, mainly my, my point was to kind of get a report out to you what's going on because we've gotten a number of letters and I kind of wanted to open a discussion. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Zandry. Councilor Letturna.
Thank you. Good evening, Henry.
Good evening.
As Jason stated, I had gone out there and actually Jason and I had met at the same time out there. Um, the fellow had contacted both of us and, um, you know, I, I understand a healthy tree, to me, a healthy tree is a tree that's in full bloom and it's, it's nicely shaped and all of that. But this tree is, it comes up and it goes in a bee. It looks like a wire with the wires running, you know, between it. And I guess everybody has an interpretation of what a healthy tree is, but, um, I, I know if I had this in my yard and that tree looked like that and it was in my yard, I think I'd cut it down because it's, it's not attractive. It's just there because over the years it was planted and the way the, uh, electric division cut it for the wires or whatever, that's the way it grew. It grew in a bee. Yeah.
Well, when I have to, when I have to tag a tree, John, you, you can't remove her for 10 days. It gives the public, uh, time to respond. And I'm the guy that has to tell the public why that tree's coming down if we have a public hearing. We usually have the public hearing in here or at the site. That tree is fully leafed out. It's a- It's a healthy tree just because you don't like the way it looks. It's it's a living tree and it's a healthy tree. And there's absolutely, I couldn't defend myself about taking that tree down. Just because you feel it doesn't look good, it's not a reason to remove a mature tree.
Well, you got two things, Henry. It 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 doesn't look good, that's one thing. The other thing is it's heaving the sidewalk. And the third thing is it might be a healthy tree, but you know, by golly, you've taken healthy trees before. I mean, you know, this is not something new to the town of Wallingford, taking a healthy tree.
Taken down healthy trees before?
Sure you have.
An example?
Um downtown, there were some good sized trees that were taken down.
Those are the the boulevard trees. These were, I got, this council knows why those trees were taken down. And they're all replaced with smaller trees. It's a it's a difference you can't equate both of those, John.
I can't. I can't because I was very involved with it. And there were some other trees downtown that weren't boulevard trees that were taken down. But don't wanna get into that discussion. The other thing that troubles me with this is the sidewalk. And I know the town has, you know, many sidewalks throughout the town. We have miles of sidewalks. And there's a plan, it's a district plan, and so many years you come around to the district. In this area out here, there's children. And when I was out there, there were children on bicycles, little ones, on on tricycles that couldn't, just couldn't manipulate the sidewalk because of the tar that was laid down. And that seems to be, I know some of the areas that were shaved and that seems to work reasonably well. But then there's other areas, and I've talked to Rob about this, that where the tar just doesn't work. You know, it's it's just, it's it's put in there, I don't know who puts it in. I don't know if your guys put it in or if an outside contractor puts it in. People are tripping on it. They're, you know, young, young moms with with kids walking down a sidewalk. Wallingford sidewalk can't negotiate the sidewalk because of the tar.
So what's, it's, as I stated earlier, I I did a dry run down uh South Main. And at least twenty areas had the the temporary patch on. I'm waiting for Rob's department to get around to that cycle. But we, I don't think we wanna put ourselves in a position where just because someone complains about it to this body or anyone else that we should all of a sudden start paying attention just to that one area. When when you've had other areas that have been temporary patched for not mu- not days or weeks, years. This this gentleman's sidewalk probably won't get done for years by the time this the the replacement cycle comes around. So I think we have to be careful. There's children in every street. Children on my street.
So Henry, let me ask you, how many how many districts are there for sidewalks?
Uh I, that's uh
Roughly.
I I think they deal with eleven. I think I have a letter here, hang on, I'll I'll tell.
Just just for everyone to remember, we spend two hundred thousand, over two hundred thousand dollars a year on repairing sidewalks. That's why we are, use a grid. And we finish everything in one grid, move to the next. And it's a it's a very logical process of moving through the town to repair the sidewalks. Otherwise, it's temporary repairs. But it's two hundred thousand dollars every year is going into repairing the sidewalks where there are features that either have been temporarily repaired or maybe there aren't repairs, there's cracks, et cetera. So there's there's a serious effort at dealing with this. But clearly, I mean, you could spend, if you could, if you could monitor and oversee the project with enough staff, you could probably spend a million dollars a year easily. We don't have that kind of money.
Understood, understood. But I think there needs to be a middle ground here, Mayor, because, you know, with these, with the districts. So if there's eleven districts.
Uh John, if you, one second. We have thirteen zones.
Okay.
And we're, the town is currently working in zone eleven.
Okay.
So they will have to do eleven, twelve, and thirteen, and then go to one. So it's
So if you're in zone
Zone eight.
If you're in zone ten.
He's in zone eight.
He's in zone eight. This poor guy could be.
Well, the the it's not that this poor guy, it's this
Well, anybody, anybody.
Throughout town.
Understood, but anybody, and and that's what I mean. You know, there's gotta be some kind of, you know, there should be some kind of middle ground so somebody doesn't have to wait eight, ten, twelve years to get a sidewalk fixed.
The only way to change that is to have more money spent. Because all of the others in are waiting as well. Um and the temporary repairs, if the temporary pair wears off, then there's another temporary pair that's put down. But the only way to cut down the time on that is to spend twice as much, three times, four times as much money, five times as much money every year, and then you would cut down the weight. But like I say, it's two hundred thousand dollars a year.
Mayor, I understand it. Thank goodness we do that. Thank goodness we do that. Because it's like our roads. If we'd ever fixed our roads, if we took the same approach and we didn't fix our roads, we'd be in the same thing. But you know, sidewalks, there's certain areas of the town that the sidewalks get heavily used. And it's basically in town. Maybe out in the outer districts, they're not used that much. Maybe those districts could be pushed off a little bit.
But you know, then you run into the school safety sidewalks. Uh you, no matter where you live, if there's a sidewalk, it does get used. And anyone who is using something that doesn't look aesthetically nice and isn't safe is going to complain. I mean, I I I hear complaints from people in Ridgeland. I hear complaints from people just about anywhere and everywhere where there happens to be a sidewalk. So we look to keep them safe with temporary repairs. But short of having a lot more money to spend on the sidewalks, there's there's, you can't turn your back on someone else just because you happen to live on this street. So you're, we're gonna do yours quicker than someone else.
I'm looking at it strictly as not aesthetics. I'm looking at this as a safety. It's a safety factor. And those patches just don't work. I had a woman come into my store that the whole side of her face was red, black, and blue, and she had a black eye because she tripped downtown on one of those patches. And she had a wrist, and her wrist was 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 in a cast because she tripped on that. So to me, it's not aesthetics. This is safety. And when you get a neighborhood with children on bicycles, you know, I saw a a sidewalk, I stopped and helped the woman where she hit one of those patches and the child flew out of the, out of the stroller. I pulled over and helped her. But you know, I I I just think we we the discussion kind of morphed from uh from from this gentleman's problem out there um on Pomeroy Avenue. But I I that was not my intention. My intention was, you know, to bring this forward, and I think Jason was the same way, to bring this forward that maybe we need to take another another look at at our sidewalks. Uh the trees, trees are a losing battle, and I ain't gonna get into that. But but I think the sidewalks, and if it if it comes to budget time or whatever, and we need to spend a couple of extra dollars on this, then we need to do it. I mean, this is, to me, it's the same as our roads. We we need to address this. And I I just um I I I just don't like the system of of waiting numerous years to get to get a sidewalk fixed. So it's, I don't think it's fair to the to the residents, to the taxpayers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Any questions or comments from the public? Mrs. Morgenstein.
Gina Morgenstein, South Main Street. I've been saying this for ages. This is a bonding issue. You take a mortgage on your house so that you can fix perhaps the sanitary pipe from your house or do many things. This town um is has roads that are forty-nine years old that have never been repaired once. Um people are fixing their driveways, but the um drain at the street is at the wrong level. You you can't piecemeal do these sidewalks and these roads. We need an investment. I agree, five times two hundred is a million dollars. We have a twenty-nine million dollar surplus. They, this is an issue, and it's a safety issue. And all it takes is one woman who broke her arm and smashed her face. Sounds like a lovely woman who decided not to sue Wallingford. But like Jason asked, what what is our liability when certain things happen? Yes, we morphed from the trees, and I could talk about the trees as well, but I'm with John. That's that's done. Um but yeah, the streets and the sidewalk, we should be investing. Um it's gonna cost us more in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Jack Ribbey Winkelman of one forty-one South Airline Road. I want to first thank you very much for your time and your efforts. Um I spoke to Mr. McCully this morning. He's a very nice gentleman regarding a parking lot that it was paved on North Cherry, North Watchet Street. And it was paved three weeks ago. And there's restriction, yellow tape that doesn't allow the members of the synagogue to park on that lot. So we have Friday night service, we have Saturday morning service, and we're not allowed to park in the lot, even though it's been paved because they have neglected to put the parking lines on there with the paint. So we're ready, waiting three weeks. And Mr. McCully said that they would probably do something this Thursday. Hopefully, they can use it Fri- I don't know how long it takes for that paint to dry. But if they could use it this Friday night and Saturday, that would help. Plus, there's a lot of people living in that community that parked their cars in that area overnight and they're not able to use it. So I just thought I'd bring that to your attention. And the problem I had, Mr. McCully, is not that one. A tree fell in front of my house and part of it, about a foot and a half landed in the street. My wife called the Public Works Department about this. And they told me that they that we had to move the, move that tree that fell into the street so they would take it away. Now, this, the piece is probably, it's part of the tree. I guess it rotted and like half the tree had fallen or less. Maybe like an eight-foot piece, but it's pretty heavy. And I didn't feel it was appropriate for me to try to lift that tree and move it into the street when about a foot of it is already in the street. Now, according to my knowledge uh from problems I've had maybe forty-five years ago, I understand that the first uh five or six feet from the curb is belongs to the town of Wallingford. It's not your property. So from the curb, that that tree is like uh eight, eight feet long that fell. Maybe five feet is on the town property, and maybe another foot is in the, over the gutter. And um I think that, I don't understand why they can't, they came by the house even, and they moved some other things that fell in the street, but they refused to move that tree. This is quite a while ago, and I just said, well, just leave it there. But I thought maybe something could be done about that. I don't think it's appropriate. People go jogging on my street from the Y. They could trip over that and they'd be suing the town. Because that's on the town property where they, where they run. I know a gentleman from Merritton that does that, it belongs to the Y. And um the golf, uh the golf course owns the uh the land next to where the tree fell. So there, I guess the town still owns that, like five or six feet from the curb. Then they have trees with, you know, where the golf course is on South Airline Road. So I just was wondering if Mr. McCully could speak to his people and have them come there and just remove that tree, and I'd be very happy.
Wait, I think you spoke to Mr. McCully earlier today, is that, is that what you said?
No, I spoke to about the parking lot.
The parking lot is scheduled to be done Thursday, and you should be able to use it Friday. It's a, it's a fast drying paint that they use. You should be able to use it. It's being done in the evening, Friday morning, you should be able to use that parking lot.
Okay, they, we just need it for Friday night. Thank you very much, Mr.
Well, you can use it on Friday. Oh, yeah, Friday night, you'll be fine.
Oh, thank you. How about the tree, could you think?
I I need an address to look at it.
Okay, it's at one forty-one South Airline Road on the uh far right side near the golf course. It's like a, it's like a foot into the gutter. It's not the whole tree, it's just like I say, I don't know if lightning, uh it looks like it's rotted. There's a lot of holes in the tree, little holes like insects that invaded it. So thank you very much for your time. Sorry I couldn't get here for the public discussion. But seeing he's talking about a tree, it gave me an opportunity.
Stars align, Jeff. Thank you.
Chairman, I just, given that people watch, you can't assume that five or six feet or ten feet or whatever number of feet you want to identify is town owned versus private owned. Every street has its own um either prescriptive easement because of public use or it is a road that was deeded to the town. So they can vary from fifty-foot widths where only probably twenty to twenty-two feet are paved. And there's a significant distance on either side between the edge of the curb and where the private property begins. It can vary vary to a road where it's only the paved proportion that the town owns and everyone owns right up to the edge of the road. It really, it has to be looked at on every individual property basis. Uh there's no way to generalize about that.
Thank you for the public service announcement. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Stancuna? We wanna try and focus it on the the tree at the property or the sidewalk.
Pomeroy Avenue.
Pomeroy Avenue.
Yes, I know that. Um Darrell Stancuna, eighteen old Village Circle. Basically, on this situation on Pomeroy Avenue, how long has this tree been causing these types of problems with the town?
The first complaint I got on it was last year.
So that was the first complaint?
Correct.
And then when did that letter get submitted from the previous owner? How was that?
Previous owner didn't send me any letters. The only correspondence that I have is from Mr. Stretcher.
So where did the letter come from, the previous owner, then about the tree?
Uh it wasn't a letter, it was, I I did a little history on any work that was done on the, on the home from the sewer department.
So you went ahead and asked the previous homeowner questions about that tree?
No, I didn't. I got the information from our sewer department. To do any work on the sanitary sewers, you have to take out a permit.
Okay.
We have a record of it.
So you have a record of that. And then how many times have you been out there to take care of this tree? Like pruning it? Are you pruning it?
I believe uh we have in my records, we we gave it to the Electric Division Ones uh to prune last year.
Okay, and from what I understand, the roots are going, like Mr. Letourneau said, into the sidewalk and buckling it up?
Correct.
Okay, and then how big are these roots?
Uh six-inch diameter and maybe eight-inch diameter. You can't see them, they're just, they're underneath the sidewalk.
And then, like Mr. Letourneau mentioned with the sidewalk, is it pushing how many inches up while people are trying to walk on it?
Oh, if you, it's probably six, eight inches high.
So
But it's not, it's not a sharp, it's a gradual, it goes up. And the town has, uh it was a tripping hazard, a lady did fall there. And our engineering department, who handles the repair and maintenance of the sidewalks, they had temporarily paved with asphalt.
And that's with tar, asphalt, or the
Tar, yeah.
Tar. Okay, and then how much does something like that cost?
Uh well, they they, I don't do that. Now, you'd have to ask the engineering department. They have a contractor who goes out, this is a spot repair. It's it's probably just several shovels full of asphalt to repair something like that. It's not tons of asphalt.
And if you guys have to go back out there, when did they put in this request about the problem with the tree?
Uh it was last year.
So this was a complaint from a year ago that's been addressed when?
Yes. I sent, my reply to Mr. Stretcher was in June of last year.
And when did he put it in?
It was June of last year.
Okay, so you responded within that month?
It was a week.
And then when did the crew go out there to take care of the problem?
Oh, the tripping hazard, that was the engineering department, and I have that if you give me a minute.
Sure.
It was done in September 2014.
Wait, the request was this year, right? Of June or 2016?
Oh, that was the previous property owner.
I thought the previous property owner didn't put in a written problem.
Well, not on the sewer, on the sidewalk. I mistake.
All right, so there's been more than two problems with this tree causing the sidewalk problem and a sewer problem, right?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I know you mentioned tonight about the trees and that, you know, you can't chop down every tree. I agree with you on that. But with this tree causing multiple problems, and I'm pro-green thumb myself with the environment, but if you've got factors of it with the water department problem in the future, you may have to go out there more. Sounds like you're gonna have to go out there again to treat the sidewalk that's been patched. It sounds like a serious liability about this lady that fell down and broke her face and whatnot over there. So why not, and plus, the homeowner doesn't like the tree because it's causing a lot of problems, and it's causing havoc for that person, it sounds like. So why not just take that tree down?
Well, I, I think we need, I think we, we need to define what's havoc. Creating havoc, it's the, the homeowner was aware of the sewer problem when he purchased the house. The previous owner told him that he had to clean the line a couple, like every two years. The tripping hazard has been repaired. He cleans the line out every two years, so I, I just don't see what the havoc is causing.
Well, it's obvious if they wrote you the letter and they want this done, it's causing that person problems.
I responded to it. My, it's, my decision is discretionary, and my decision is that I'm not removing the tree. I'm advising the home, I advise the homeowner to replace the clay line that, as I stated before, is 94 years old, and clay does deteriorate with time. If he invests in the PVC installation by a licensed contractor, he'll never have a problem there again. And if the line, when the contractor is there, if that line goes through that tree, I will have the tree removed at the town's expense. I will work with him.
And then what kind of damage would happen if that line goes through?
You, you can, if the tree is, if they have to go through the tree, tree has to come down.
Okay, and then...
When they install the new line.
New line. And has this homeowner, from what Mr. Zandry was mentioning tonight about the tree, does this person wanna pay for this tree to be taken down?
Excuse me?
Jason Zandry, you mentioned about if the homeowner could put in a request and how that request would work, and how it would be handled if the person wanted to take down a tree that's on town property.
Person cannot remove the tree. The only, the only person in the town of Wallingford that can grant permission, and I would never do this to a private homeowner, any tree, any trees on town property, I'm the only one that can authorize the removal of that tree.
Okay, but can the person, did the person put in a request to pay for that tree to be taken down on that property, on the town property?
No, I don't see anything in my notes where he offered to pay for it. I, I wouldn't allow him to do that anyway. We don't do that.
Okay, so if they put in a request for that tree to come down, and they would pay for it, would you let them?
No.
Okay, and then the other part is, since this is a serious liability issue with the sidewalks, are you gonna pursue it and let somebody fall down and, and get hurt severely, like Mr. Letourneau mentioned tonight, that it's a safety issue?
Well, I don't, I don't maintain the repair of the sidewalk. That's the, the town of Wallingford Engineering Department handles that. They have a contractor under a bid to take care of the sidewalks. I don't care, take care of the sidewalks.
And as far as the $200,000 a year that Mr. Mayor mentioned being spent on repairing sidewalks, is that for repair, or is that for paving? Is that for what types of...
It's used for replacing sections of deteriorated sidewalk, sidewalk that has frost, heaves, et cetera. It's also used for temporary repairs until they can get to the permanent repair, repairs.
I, I think the, I think the $200,000 pretty much goes for new, the concrete program.
Yeah, it's...
That's my understanding. That, that money is for that program.
I don't use the funds. I'm just, that, that would be the normal procedure.
All right, so that's not for the repairs. That's for new concrete plans coming up to put in sidewalks?
It is regarded as repairs. They're not doing the length of a sidewalk. They do the panels that have deteriorated or, or safety issues. So it's not the length of whatever sidewalk is on any street. It is the panels where, where there's cracks and, and they need to be replaced.
And how many, how many letters do you actually get for tree problems in a year?
Me? Less than five.
So you get less than five, and has this person been persistent about this tree?
I got one letter, but he has communicated with counselors. Mr. Letourneau has been involved with it, and I guess they went over to his house. But he hasn't contacted me on the phone or anything.
Okay, and then the other good point that was made tonight is, you know, you did take down some trees downtown, right?
This, we're, we're way off base here.
That was part of the discussion. We're not. Someone...
Yeah, but okay, I'll, I'll quickly explain. The downtown trees were replaced. They were replaced there, what's known as boulevard trees. The application of the downtown area with trees is totally different than the situation we're discussing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one thing, one thing. I think you guys should consider this person and let the havoc go and work with this person. Maybe take it down. I mean, if you're, you're only getting five letters this year, and it's not really much of a problem and annoyance of getting 100 letters from different residents, I think you should try to work with this person. He probably didn't even know what he bought into. And it's just not a good thing to cause havoc like that. I mean, if this tree's causing one problem, I could see, okay, let's defend it and keep the tree. But if it's causing, could cause serious medical liabilities, one, and two, future buckling of the sidewalks, and three, with it affecting that sewer pipe, you're talking about spending more money to send your crews down there over the years versus paying $150 to get the tree taken down. So you take the tree down for $150 versus spending thousands over the coming years, since you said it's a very healthy tree, so it's probably gonna outlive all of us, and spend like $100,000 over repairs of that just one tree versus take it down for $150.
Public Works is not doing any repairs there. We don't do anything there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions or comments from the council on this issue. Yes, Counselor Letourneau.
I just want to clarify one thing. I was misquoted by Mr. Stancuna. The woman that fell and hurt her face and arm, that was not in that area. That was in the downtown area. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. This is not an action item, so there is no further cause to take. We'll move on to item...
Mr. Chairman, before we do, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Mr. McCully, thank you very much for coming out to this this evening. I, I've been trying to minimize bringing items...
It's not a problem. Anytime, that's, that comes with the job.
No, I know. I, I've been trying myself personally to minimize the number of department heads that I've had come forward. I'm trying the call a little bit more often myself, but I just felt this was one of those items where there'd be a number of questions. There might have potentially been a number of people that wanted to ask questions, and so, you know, I, I appreciate you coming out.
Not a problem.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McCully. Counselor Fishbiden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I, you know, since this situation was brought up by a resident, was the resident, was it brought to their attention that we were gonna talk about this issue tonight?
So, may I, may I respond? I, I did contact him. Originally, we were gonna try and bring this up. I, I'm trying to remember. I thought it was last month, and he was around at that time, but I believe Mr. McCully wasn't. And Mr. McCully was around this time, but the resident wasn't. So I did, I contacted him personally to let him know that the item was on the agenda. He, he, he was unable to attend, but I, I think that he was planning to review the, the recorded session of the council meeting, and I'm sure if he's got any follow-up, he probably will do it directly with Public Works.
Yeah, I just, I didn't have a lot of comments because we didn't have both sides here, so I just, thank you for your answer.
Yeah, no, I, I did attempt, but we may have been pushing it off again. And I figured, you know, because even, you know, Counselor Letourneau and I, he, as, as he mentioned, we, we both showed up there separately one day. Just so happened, we ran right into one another. We talked with them. We told them we would try to make a couple of calls and find out some more details, and, you know, this was the, the best we could do of bringing them forward at this time. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to Section 1-206D of the Connecticut General Statutes with respect to the purchase, sale, and/or leasing of property, and Section 1-225F, and Section 1-206B regarding strategy negotiations with respect to the pending foreclosure matter of the town of Wallingford versus Cynthia Francis Waters et al., and the pending matter of Taylor v. Town of Wallingford.
Second, all those in favor of going into executive session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Seeing none, this motion passes. Please clear the chambers for executive session. Thank you. Thank you. We'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
All those in favor of coming out of executive session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Passes. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize the Law Department to take action in the pending foreclosure matter of Town of Wallingford v. Cynthia Francis Waters et al. as discussed in executive session. Second.
Any discussion? Anything from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. This motion passes. Seeing no further business on the agenda, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? We are adjourned.